You are recording.
Yes.
What number?
Four dot two, review June 23rd, just coming Tuesday. Anybody want to ask anything about this? Just so I know, if not, we can.
I just have one.
Yeah, we'll wait because we haven't started the meeting yet, so we don't. So let people in. Yeah, we're recording now, okay, so we're recording. But when we're ready, okay, sorry.
I'm bringing up the agenda, it shut down on the call.
I don't, I don't think so.
I didn't, I just so I know.
Yeah.
Go from there.
Was Andy there? I didn't even see him.
I didn't see Andy log on yet. And we can't tell who's in the room, so. Well, you can't.
Some of them, like, you know.
You want to, yeah, use that screen.
I'm not, I can't touch the screen. It's up there.
Oh, it's up there, okay.
I can't help.
Wendy, what did that? Well, this isn't going to work if I'm blocking path. And I'm, I.
That's fine.
Wouldn't we get the charts up?
He's got it in front of him.
Yeah, I've heard it.
Okay, all right, well, let me know.
I'm good. We're waiting for.
We're waiting for Andy. Okay, I guess we can.
We can start Andy. Oh, the one that's us. Andy, wait a second, I just got a text. I can't get in the meeting, try three different ways, sorry.
I don't think I heard yours.
Yeah.
That's animal. This is.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, ready? Oh, that's Burns, okay. This is your piece of paper.
Humanitorial Disaster Proclamation, Executive Order 2020-07, Executive Order in Response to COVID-19, COVID Executive Order for 2020-33, Executive Order in Response to COVID-19, COVID-19 Executive Order Number 31, and as reissued and extended by Executive Order 2020-39, Executive Order in Response to COVID-19, COVID-19 Executive Order Number 37. Open Meetings at -5 Illinois 120/2 and 120/7, Suspension of Public Body Physical Present and Limiting Remote Participation. As the President of the Board of Trustees of the Kennedy County Conservation District has determined that it is not practical or prudent to hold the public meeting of the Board of Trustees on June 18th in person due to the current pandemic, PA 101-064. Public meeting agenda will be posted to the district's website as mccdistrict.org. And just so nobody is confused, we can't have a public meeting with the public in the room, so that's why we're using a Zoom call for the public.
Now, Wendy, could you hear that?
Yes.
Could you, could you hear what Vern just read?
Yes.
Okay, good, thank you.
Okay. Okay. And we'll call the meetings to order. How about a roll call?
Sure. What means that? Okay. Trustee Cook.
Here.
Trustee Brandt.
Here.
Trustee Thomas.
Here.
Trustee Henning.
Present.
Trustee Fritz.
Here.
Trustee Campbell.
Here.
And trustee Scotty.
Here.
We have a forum.
May I have a motion for consideration to allow the Board of Trustees to attend remotely through participation as per administrative policy due to -20402, the basis for missing to meet personal illness for the state of the material disaster proclamation, Executive Order 2020-07 and PA 101-0640, suspending requirements that members of the public body must be physically present.
You don't need to. Oh, you are present. Oh, in the room, okay. I didn't know, I put "if needed" in case somebody was not able to.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
All right.
Okay. We're opening up to 3.0, public comments, number one. Does anybody on Zoom call like to make a statement or comment to the board?
I see none.
She saw none, try it again.
Okay. We're in 3.0, public comments, one. Public comments of Conservation District matters will be limited to three minutes per person. Board members welcome all comments and will take them under advisement. Would anybody in the public like to make a statement to the board? Hearing none, we'll move to 4.0, new business. Discussion, oh, wait, is Andy on?
He is on, yes.
Okay. 4.1, discussion of Resolution 20-54, a resolution adopting a financial strategy off the $4.3 million pension loan installment in fiscal year 2021. Andy?
Can you hear me?
You just gotta speak louder if you can, Andy.
Can everyone hear me now?
Yeah.
Can you, let me see if I can get the PowerPoint going here for you. Let me share.
Everyone wants to start back up, redo your software.
I gotta find my page again. I think we're good. Everybody can see the first slide?
Yes, we can.
Hopefully, the, if you looked at the PowerPoint ahead of time, the number of slides doesn't scare anybody. A lot of these will go pretty quick. Just a real quick background, we know, you know, the Peachtree was 138 acres we purchased. I just like this graphic because it really gives a nice illustration of how integral.
Andy, speak louder. Speak louder.
I just wanted to show this graphic because it gives a nice illustration of how integral the Peachtree parcel is to that hollow site in the area. Everybody remembers, we purchased the land for $6.5 million. We put $200,000 down on principal. It was at a 2.5% interest rate, and it was originally a 10-year term. We made two payments out over that first 10 years. We made a $1.5 million principal payment on September 2011, another $0.5 million and 16, which extended the contract to the current due date of December 31st, '21. And it brings that balance to the current amount of $4.3 million. We're making annual interest payments of $107,000. And I know since 2000, really, 13, 14, we've really been looking at a financial strategy for this. And then as we've approached that December 31st, '21 deadline over the last couple of years, we've gotten obviously even more serious about it and really looking into it. And then really now, as we've gone into February of this year and March with the coronavirus, we see the interest rates falling a lot. And that really, you know, incited everybody, especially the board, to say, hey, is there a way that we could start taking advantage of this? I am going to try and use a laser pointer and hopefully it won't lock me up. But you can see, this is the first time right here, really in March, where rates dipped actually below the 2.5% that the installment contract is currently at. So obviously, it makes, you know, really good sense if we can refinance that. With that, the board challenged us to look at options, and they directed us to make sure that we weren't limited in our scope. They wanted to see some short-term options, including as short as a five and a three-year complete payoff of it. So in the board's summary, you'll see we presented seven options. It includes a, up here is the top, is a 20-year term. And we showed three different versions of that. Then we showed a 10-year payoff, a five-year and a three-year, and these are, all of these four are just a straight-line amortization, you know, five and three years. These are the applicable rates that should still be pretty close. Rates really haven't moved much in the last few weeks. But you can see, obviously, as the term goes down, the rate's going to come down with it. We start with that $4.3 million, and then we backed out the upfront principal payment as we appropriate for this budget, the 1.9. In this first one, we didn't put any principal down, so obviously, that's preserving the most reserves. The second one, we put down just enough so that the total payment, which we'll get to, equals this 1.9, and I'll show you in a second what that means. But when you back out the principal, we're left with this balance to finance, which is basically, really, in the ones that we're looking at, it's $2.3 million. So the 4.3 minus the 1.9 is 2.3, which we're going to need to find a way to finance. And then the annual debt service payment for each of those options, you can see here, obviously, as you start getting in these shorter terms, 10 years, you know, $255,000 annual debt service. As you get to a five-year, it goes up to almost a half a million dollars, that's a year, and then, you know, three-year, $804,000 bucks. This option seven is looking at a seven-year, and it's only interest-only, and we'll talk about that in more detail, so it's quite a bit less than the others. And then if we look at the total district spend, and if you looked and read the summary, I mean, we cash flowed this all out for the full 20 years and looked at the net present value of all these things, but, you know, for this presentation, I'm just focusing on, you know, what's the real impact of the district to make sure, you know, we were comfortable with how it leaves reserves and the other impacts it has on us. So if you just look at the total district spend, which would be the principal plus this annual payment for the calendar years 21 through 25, so five years of that payment, so it's really a six-year spend, 20 to 25. This would be the total district spend, just today's dollars. And obviously, again, as you get into paying this off in five or three years, $4.4 million spend, $4.3 million, and then versus option seven, which is the one that we think's kind of a compromise that we'll get into detail about, just a $2.1 million spend. It would leave ending reserve balances then accordingly from 6.5, where we had no money down, and we're spreading it out for a full 20 years. As a percent of operating, annual operating expense, it'd be almost 70%. Again, you get to these shorter-term ones, you're looking at bringing it down to 37% for both of those, and then a 61% on option seven. Again, this is total reserves.
Yes. Understanding that percent as a, the reserves as a percent of operating expenses, I don't think I get that.
Can you speak louder, Dave?
Yeah, I don't think I get that.
I heard, I heard you, Dave. So the target goal for the district and any agency, really any public agency, the minimum target you would shoot for is 25% of your total annual operating expenses. And we've always talked about that, you know, for many years, so that's kind of the minimal target. And then typically, agents, agencies, depending on their risk, how vulnerable their revenue streams are, will start adjusting that target upward. It's pretty rare that you'd find a public entity that would say, well, you know, we're going to go with something less than 25%. So the district's total annual operating budget's about nine million bucks. So this would represent, here you have 70% of that nine million. This 6.5 million is almost, you know, 69% of the total operating budget of nine million. And as you get to the smaller one, go ahead.
Thank you.
Okay. I'm going to lose my voice, I feel like I'm yelling. So if it's too loud, let me know.
Well, if you got closer to your computer, you wouldn't have to speak as loud.
I'm about 18 inches away right now.
No, the public is fine. They hear it clear, it's just this machine is not functioning here. Need a speaker.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. So again, this shows a total ending reserves. There's nothing assigned, there's nothing set aside for camp. That would just be what's left. And then as a percent of that nine million dollar operating budget, and then lastly, what I'm saying is if you set aside the 25% operating threshold or one quarter of the annual operating budget, and this is all general fund we're talking about, this would, what would be left that could be used then for other district needs, such as the camp. That's the main one where we assign other dollars to it. And again, you can see, when you get to these large spends in the shorter term, five and three years, you're really, you know, getting down just over a million dollars with all that would be, is all that would be available beyond that 25% minimum target balance. Questions, comments? Everybody can hear?
Yeah, we're here.
So the one we're going to talk about is the option seven, and that's the one that seemed to be a pretty reasonable compromise. It's not, you know, a 10-year or 20-year financing. It falls kind of halfway between that 10- and three-year point. Oh, one last thing, sorry. The other piece of that, too, is when you, when we make this investment by paying down principal, and then, and again, this is just looking in at the first five years and then averaging it, you're going to lose the opportunity, potential of that money to earn in investments. So this shows you the impact of that. And again, in the one we're looking at, we'll be losing about $22,000 of interest revenue a year, but that's somewhat been anticipated because, you know, we've been looking at that 1.9 or 1.5 for quite some time. On an MPV basis, as the summary says, and it's kind of beyond all of us, but actually, with the most reasonable discount rate over time, which we think would approach back to that 2%, 2.5%, this option seven actually ranks the highest. So just kind of a nice other additional support for that option. So then, just to dive, just to dive into that a little bit more, yes?
This would be, I think it's the change in the interest that makes it higher or whatever, just that very last part he made about the option seven being a little bit better in terms of the lost revenue.
Could you repeat that end of, could you hear her?
No. No, was she commenting or making a question?
No, I'm just asking for you to repeat that last part about the, where option seven actually looks a little bit better depending on the rate.
So on the, on the lost interest revenue, it's really just how much is that investment going to take in those first six years? So if you're paying a big chunk of principal, then you're paying a large annual debt service payment over those first five years, obviously, that's a lot of money that's not going to be available for investments. So we actually looked at, what I actually looked at is I looked at the interest, you know, the debt service payments through, through '26, and then looked at the total interest that would be lost in each of those years, and that kind of compounds because each year, you're paying more and more toward the loan. So each year, you have less and less money that would otherwise be in reserves and investments earning interest revenue. So basically, as you spend more, you're going to lose more interest revenue. And if you look at, you know, spending 4.4, that's going to have the highest lost interest revenue because you're in, you know, instead of putting the 4.4 in investments, you're putting it into paying down the pension or paying off the pension loan in the next five years. Does that make sense?
Andy?
If, if the money spent up here, you can't earn revenue with it.
Andy?
Yes.
Okay, I just want to clarify for my own self and for Lynn. If we, if we take the option three, option four, five, or six, we lose more interest because we've taken a bigger piece of the reserve out, and we won't annually, we won't collect that interest.
Right, at a, at a faster rate, you know, you're taking.
Yeah, no, but I understood that. What I was wondering, because you said you added something at the very end, and it's fine. It doesn't, I guess we don't need to belabor it at the point. I understand this is lost interest opportunity, and that's where the different options tell you what that is. I thought you said something about interest rates. At some point, if they drop a certain way or go a certain direction, actually return on investment, that that makes option seven look even a little bit better, I think is what you said at the end.
On the net present, on the net present value, option seven actually ranks the best using a discount rate or assumed rate of return of 2% or 2.5%.
I just wasn't sure where that threshold was.
But, but to me, that's, it's, you know, as a director of finance, mostly concerned about reserves and the ability of the district to, you know, meet its needs and carry out its operations, I'm much less concerned about that MPV. You know, a finance person, that's probably all they would focus on. So it's, it's just an interesting support that in fact, from an MPV value, looking out of the whole course and comparing all these together, this one actually ranks the highest, option seven.
Okay.
It has the lowest cost of funds over the full life of the proposed borrowing.
They have CD rates that are over 1.75, we're actually not going to be losing anything. We won't be making any money on the, on the spread.
Right, okay.
We good?
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you, Andy.
Sure, certainly. I've never had to feel like I had to talk this loud before, so.
You probably didn't need to.
So then, so looking at the option seven, there's basically three parts to it. The first one, obviously, we're going to pay off the pension loan this fiscal year '21. Hopefully, this calendar year, again, using 1.9 million in reserves and then issuing a debt certificate for 2.3 million. And then secondly, in '26, we would pay off these debt certificates with a GEO bond issuance. And really, steps two and three are tied together. Then in '27, those GEO bonds would be paid in full when the debt service levy from '26 is collected in '27. And I'll go into each of those a little bit more. The other thing that I, that I especially like, and I, you know, I think staff for sure shares this, is that option seven utilizes the property tax reduction of 2026 to help pay for this debt, which really promotes intergenerational equity. And basically, we, you know, we want to get this paid off this fiscal year, that reduction's not till '26, and we want to make sure there's no tax increase or no perception of a tax increase from whenever we pay this off, issue that debt, to the time we can pay the new debt certificates off. This shows the actual 2019 property tax levy. You can see 61% of it is debt service.
Hold on, Andy. We've lost you. And we got your voice, but we lost the slides. We lost the Zoom.
The public is still up and working, it's just this room.
Okay, so it says computer.
Do you want me to stop, share, and reshare?
No, you're fine.
No, you're fine.
You're fine, Andy, it's just here. We need, we're having technical difficulty in the boardroom. The public is seeing the slide that you have on, and they're hearing you fine.
We can all refer to the packet.
Correct, yes.
You just have to tell us which page, what the page looks like because we can't see it. And they're not numbered.
Yeah, I'm trying to see if I even have a slide. So we're looking at a pie chart, slide number nine.
We can't get you at all. We lost you.
Can I continue? Wait.
Go ahead, we're not get, it's not coming up. It won't let me connect.
So, so again, with, you know, 61% of the total property tax levy is debt service. And I, if we've looked at this graph before, when that goes away, we're going to see that, you know, huge reduction in, in the overall property tax. And interestingly, you know, with a very conservative assumed growth of the EAV, the district's total tax rate will fall to the lowest point in over two decades. And it'd be interesting to go back because it, you know, it could be the lowest tax rate in three decades when that happens. So that's a pretty remarkable situation that's going to take place. So then, looking at that payoff, the first part is we're going to spend 1.9 million for reserves. I just wanted to go back, and we haven't talked about this in a while, and remind everybody where that 1.9 million came from. So this is the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report for March 31st of 19. That's the audited financial statements. Within that, the board had assigned 1.4 million for the pension loan debt service within the general fund. Then looking at the annual budget, pretty small on this screen, but again, with the general fund for this annual budget fiscal year '21, we've included a permanent transfer of that 1.4 million dollars out of the general fund to the debt service fund to provide for a paydown of the pension loan.
Andy?
Yes.
We're going to try something.
I don't know where you're at.
He's right here.
Oh, sorry.
And hold on a second.
We're going to try something.
We're going to try something.
Are you guys having to follow by paper?
Yeah. Okay, but hold. You want it, RTV? Elizabeth's going to put up the slide, the presentation, without going through Zoom and see if we can share it on the screen.
Okay.
We can't get Zoom.
So the, right now, the trustees cannot see it? Is that correct?
Trustees, yeah, everyone in this room cannot see it. We're thinking of watching Central Park. You want King and Stat nine? Okay.
It's slide number 15, if you're.
We got something. All of a sudden, we have something. But now, Elizabeth. Elizabeth, we're back on Zoom.
You're back on?
Yeah. Well, I'll get back. I think, maybe. We don't know yet. There we go. Well, if we can get. Okay, we're back up.
This computer just died.
Your, your computer died?
I'm just kidding.
Okay.
All right, so. So, so again, we're all good?
Yeah. We, we, we just have to catch up to the right page, okay.
Okay. Slide 15.
We can't tell it's slide number. But it looks like what the screen looks like right now.
To be able to find the annual budget.
Operating revenue.
Did you find the annual budget cover?
One more.
Andy, can you?
Can you go?
Can you hear us?
You're looking for the annual budget cover.
Yeah, we got it.
We got it.
Okay, go to the next slide.
Yeah.
All right, so that's the general fund summary within the annual budget. And now at the bottom, we show.
Yeah, we're good.
Down at the bottom, we show the 1.4 million dollars being permanent transfer out of the general fund to the debt service fund for the pension loan. The other piece. Go to the next slide. Shows Natural Resources Special Revenue Fund.
Yeah.
So this is, this is the other part of the funding. This was the new part then. In January of 18, we received a bequest for $474,000 from a donor. The board accepted that via ordinance. It was committed within the Natural Resource Special Revenue Fund for something, a restoration, preservation project of lasting significance. And I think everybody agreed that in. And I think everybody agreed that an investment, a permanent investment in, in the peach and land would be very worthy of the bequest. So that's where the other 474 came from. Within the 21 budget then, if you look at the special revenue fund, you'd see that 474,000 as a permanent transfer out. And again, that would be going into the debt service fund. So this is the budget, again, fiscal year 21 debt service fund. And you see, this is the land acquisition installment loan fund that we set up. There's a principal expenditure appropriate for that full 1-9. And then the permanent transfer in, 1.4 coming from the general fund and about a half a million coming from the special revenue fund. So that's the 1.9. Then to talk a little bit about the debt certificates, 2.3 million in debt certificates. So, um, a couple of times for sure, we've gone into a lot of detail about the different bond types we could consider as part of a financing or refinancing strategy for the installment loan. The, the GEO referendum, non-referendum bonds, and alternative revenue bonds, the one thing they all have in common is they are backed by a property tax levy. And there's no way for that not to take place, that's the nature of those bonds. And even though the alternative revenue bonds are designed to be paid with some other revenue source, a non-tax revenue source, they still are issued with a, with a property tax levy backing. And then it's up to the agency to abate that levy every year. So because of that, the board really, you know, wasn't interested in looking at those, and that's where the focus was on the debt certificates. It really is a bond, it is a security. The difference is, there is no property tax levy backing of it. Um, it's serviced from non-tax revenues or reserves then. There's no P-Tax levy ability. There is a slight interest premium, so you're going to pay a little bit more, because there is no assurity of that property tax backing. When we looked at this last time in 2018, it was about 10 basis points or 0.1% to 15%, so pretty small. Comes out to about $3,500 a year of differential in that five-year period. And, and that's give or take, because again, we haven't had time to dive into any of these things. These are just strategies that we think will work. So if the board gives its consensus tonight and/or Tuesday, then we'd really start diving in and looking into these things in more detail. It's not subject to the BNA Act, which is the Bond Issu- Issuance Notification Act. So there's no public hearing or petition required. They are limited to a 20-year term. So the other bonds, you could go out 25. Debt certificates are limited to 20. Has no impact, obviously, on our proposed strategy. So the ones that we would issue right now, the rate estimate was 1.75%. Well below that 2.5% we're paying on the pitch and, pitch and loan. That includes the cost of issuance, which is estimated, I think, at about 40 basis points. I think it's about $45,000, I think, would be the total cost of issuance. But again, that's embedded in that 1.75%. And that's applicable to a public offering, which we'd assume this would be. In this strategy, we're proposing would be interest-only payments. I put an asterisk by that. Again, because we really haven't fine tuned this. In the information I put in front of you, it shows a 40,977 annual interest payment, or for those five years, you know, $204,000 in total. There may be an opportunity to, to, you know, go a little bit higher than that and have some principal amortization. And we'll be able to, you know, figure that out once we get further into the plan. This will be paid from district reserves, and those reserves can be formally committed. So in the past, we've done an assignment, which is a less formal action of the board. A commitment would be through a, a board ordinance to formally commit it. And that would ensure that those dollars stay just for that purpose and are there for those five years to, to make that debt service. These, again, would mature in 2026. And at that point, the principal, 2.3 or something less than that, if there's some principal amortization, would be due in full. So that's step one. Step two then, in 2026, when those debt certificates mature, we'd have, we'd issue 2.3 million dollars of GEO bonds, general obligation bonds. They would be backed with a tax levy to pay off the debt certificates. And really, two and three, those two steps are tied together, because that levy's sort of automatic. So in 26, when we issue the 2.3 GEO bonds, a debt service levy ordinance will automatically be filed with the county at the time the bonds are issuance, issued. The bonds would have a one-year. Yes.
Andy?
Yeah.
So in 2026, we're going to have to go to referendum to, to get GEO bonds, right?
Uh, the assumption here would be it's a non-referendum issuance. Again, because it's going to go against the 2026 property tax levy reduction. So in a few more slides, we'll look at that one more time and, and I think it's, you know, very big.
We'd still have to have it backed by PTAL tax.
With the 20, yeah, with the 26 GEO bonds, there would be a levy backing to those. They would be issued, they would be issued with a one-year maturity. So they're issued in 26, the debt certificates will be paid off in full. And then those bonds would be due in full in 2027. And the levy that's issued in 26 would be collected in 27. The bonds are paid off, all the district's debt's gone. Everything related to the installment loan would be paid in full. And then, looking at why this works as well as it does, so we've looked at this before, but this is the total property tax levy. I show the debt service portion of it, and these are actual debt service levy via the ordinance contractual payments that are due. Then this is the total tax levy, so I'm estimating what our total PTAL levy will be that we add on to that. So it's the 12 million plus the general fund social security insurance fund. Makes sense? So we're estimating in 2025, our total tax levy will be 23 million, of which 14.1 million is debt service. In 26, that 14.1 goes to zero. All the GEO bonds are paid in full. The total tax levy goes from 23 million to 9 million, to 60% reduction in taxes. In this option seven that we're looking at, instead of going from 14.1 to zero, we go from 14.1 million GEO bond debt service paid in full, that's gone, to these new GEO bonds with a one-year maturity, so it's one levy year, 2.3 million issued in 26. It's still a 50% property tax reduction. Again, that's a remarkable thing that you don't hardly ever hear about, if ever. So we would go from 23 million to a total tax levy of 11.3 million, 50% reduction. Then interestingly enough, in 27, so you've, you've levied for these new bonds to pay off the debt certificates this year. You collected in 27, you pay them off, that levy's gone. There's no more debt levies in 27. So now you're going to go from 11.3 million estimated total taxes after a 50% reduction to 9.2. So a second consecutive year, this time you're going to have a 19% reduction in total taxes. So that gives the district two opportunities, a little more flexibility if we're looking for an opportunity for a referendum, an operational increase, you know, whether it's, maybe it's land acquisition dollars, whatever. You really have two significant opportunities to use those reductions to mitigate. But again, I think, you know, when the district would issue these bonds, the net result of that issuance, it's just very hard to imagine the circumstances where the district could take bad public PR for refinancing the existing debt and the taxpayers realizing a 50% property tax reduction in that year. I mean, this is something we're going to promote the heck out of. Makes sense?
I'd say yes.
And just as a little bit more information, just because we've never looked at it, but, you know, I went and grabbed the outstanding GEO bonds for the Kala County Forest Preserves. We show, the, the fiscal years aren't all identical. Lake County, I couldn't find theirs on their website. They only had the CAFRA for 18. But again, they're showing $262 million of GEO bonds outstanding as of December of 18. King County showing 144 is December of 2019. DuPage 102 is December of 19. And then the closest thing to the district are March 31st of 20. We're showing we have $76 million outstanding. And if you go to the end of this fiscal year, that'll be down to just $67 million outstanding in GEO bonds. So we're sitting in a much lower position. Yes.
The 1231 18 for Lake County and the 19 for King and DuPage County. Is that what it was at that point in time?
Is? Yes.
Okay, so you don't have, okay, we don't know how they're playing.
There's been no, I do know there's been no new debt issued. I think there was a refunding for DuPage, but no new debt. So it would just be, you know, their normal amortization of it. In the next slide, this is how they show the amortization of those debts. Again, with, with Lake County, for the five years from 2024 to 28, they just show a lump sum. So they show the individual here, years for these prior years. And then because just the schedule would be so big, they just showed the five years of lump sum. So I just took it and divided by five. But this actually probably goes like this for Lake County. And then it probably starts coming back down, because in these next five, you know, that's a lot less. But, but nonetheless, the real point is Lake County showing debt all the way out to 2035. And then I threw the Rockford Park District again, just because I had it. They have GEO bonds being paid all the way out to 2037. But they're always, almost every year, reissuing and refinancing. They fund a lot of CIP that way, like many other park districts do. DuPage was the one, there actually, looks like there right now would be paid off in full in 2025. And then the district's in green, so again, this is that levy year, the last time we levy for them. You'd have a little tiny green bar down here in 26, under the option seven. But I just thought that would give you a little bit of an idea of what the other agencies are doing in comparison. And then lastly, something I've shown before, but if you take the actual interest we've paid to date on that installment loan since we've had it, it's a million seven. The future interest that we pay, and I'm assuming we got it paid off September 30th of this year, it'd be 44,792. The interest on the debt certificates, assuming we issued them October 1st, carried them through September of 26, estimated $245,000. GEO bonds, one-year interest of 40,000 bucks. So the total interest on this loan would be $2 million, $2,077,000. And again, about a 20-year term, which is, you know, like a normal bond issuance, would have a 20-year term or 25. We did go back a year and a half ago and, and looked at what it would have cost had this land, had we used the old one bond proceeds to purchase the land. The interest would have been $4,064,000. And again, that's because the old one bonds were issued at 5.3%. They're refinancing, oh, five at 4.3%. And so this is just kind of a blended yield to get to that $4 million estimate. But again, a substantial savings over that other opportunity that would have been there of a million and $9 if we adopted a strategy, and this is paid in full in 2027. That is all I got.
Andy, I do have a question. You know, we've had that 1.4 in there for quite a while, and it's given us flexibility to do with whatever comes up. Now we're proposing spending it to pay off the pitch and loan. And now we have no more flexibility. We do address that, where something comes up, we still have 25% of our, our debts, no, excuse me, the the reserves at 25%. No more, we have not above 25% when we spend this money.
No, we don't.
Yeah, we, we would still be.
How are you finding that?
We've got all kinds of flexibility.
Yeah.
We even flawed here. And the summary financial.
That's what he was talking about, the reserves as a percent of operating. 61%.
Right.
So that's based from right now. It'll be in 2026 then, right? We'll have that available.
No.
We have 61% right now.
You meant the reserves in 2026, that you'll still have 61.4%. So it's above and beyond the 25%.
Okay, that's in 2026. What happens between now, 2020 and 2026? Do we have any reserves above the 25%?
Yes.
Yes, so.
61.4.
Right, so in, in the board summary, in the board.
4 million all the way to 3.4.
Yeah, 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 okay, okay. Okay, yeah, that answers my question.
And in the board summary, I go into detail about how I, you know, estimated the ending reserves in 26. But, but the one thing we didn't do is we didn't include any operating surpluses or deficits. So the assumption is, for, you know, fiscal years 22 going, you know, through 26, it's a balanced budget and it comes out perfect. Well, we know that won't be the case. But I'm, I'm guessing, you know, because so much capital is budgeted out of reserves this fiscal year, you know, that we'll, we'll probably see some small reductions or operating deficits in some of those years going forward. But nonetheless, every camp presentation I've done for the last two years has backed out that one point. Has assumed that 1.4 was not available, but it was going to pitch in, because, you know, all the boards up to that point had agreed, we're going to assign that to the pitch and loan. So to me, that piece of it doesn't change at all. And the, the only thing that's really hitting us new, and, and again, from my perspective personally, is that $474,000 donation. And that's, again, as a director of finance, that's a, a great, it's, you know, I didn't know we had, I didn't know it could be used for this. It's a great use for it. So I'm very comfortable with it.
Thank you.
That's all I got.
Thanks, Andy.
Thank you, Andy.
Thanks for your effort.
Andy, thank you. And I like the idea of the board going on record committing the reserves to pay that interest on these debt certificates. In other words, just making our sense of what we wish to do as firm as possible. However you write up the resolution, I would ask you to include that. And I appreciate all the work that you did here. It certainly answers a lot of my questions. And at the same time, it protects the district's reserves going forward. And I'm sure we're going to have a lot of decisions to make about, about spending. But this takes the pitch and loan off the table. I'll have to think of something else to do.
Are you talking about that 40,000 annually, or about 200,000?
Yes, yes.
We have that 200,000 that we, that we have.
From ex, from the excess revenue.
So if we set that 200,000 aside.
What person, what?
If we set the 200,000 or beyond dollars aside and put that, pay this interest, then we've already got that money set aside to take care of that. So really, everything is, this, this is a clear cut, cut plan right from here to the seven years. Takes care of the whole thing, and Andy doesn't have to go through this anymore.
Right.
Yay.
It would be nice not to have it over our heads. Yes.
Thank you.
Target's hit, we don't need to move.
Andy, again, thank you very much. You know, you, you, you figured it out, so thank you very, very much. I appreciate it, and so does the rest of the board.
Well, and I think, I do think that the idea of coming, having that debt certificate holdover for this time period was something that we've been talking about for some time. What's nice about this is it solidifies, what do we do? Is that still okay? Is that still the best option? And what do we do in 26 and 27? So a lot of work was done to get this, so thank you, Elizabeth, Andy, and staff.
And somehow that $200,000 that was additional income must have been assigned from heaven that we needed to put in here.
There you go.
Thank you, Andy.
Yep.
That being the case, no other questions for Andy at this time? No other questions for Andy at this time? No? I'd like to move on to item 4.2, review of the June 23 regular meeting agenda items. Does anybody have anything on the regular board meeting agenda? You all have a copy in your package. Do you want to pull anything to discuss right now? The only thing, Andy, I always pay attention to those ADP payroll registers for the month, it'll be for the month of May. I didn't see those in this board package. The ADP thing, you know.
Yeah, we'll get that on Tuesday.
On Tuesday.
Oh.
Okay.
Done.
Okay, any other questions for staff? On the agenda for the 23rd meeting? If not, I would like to have a motion to go into executives.
If not, I would like to have a motion to go into executive, executive session pursuant to 2C1 personnel and 2C11 pending litigation, and 2C21 review of closed session minutes of the Openshooting Act by OMI 120 slash 1. Do I have a motion?
You have a motion.
Second?
Oh, sorry.
Can I ask a quick question, and it's not about the motion? It's on the agenda, I'm sorry, because I didn't jump in fast enough. If something comes up with a question before Tuesday, that's okay, right? For the consent agenda, if there's anything that comes, I don't think there's going to be, but I mean, I've, I've looked at this, it looks fine, but it's just, not discussing it today doesn't preclude next week. Okay, perfect. Okay, we're good. Thank you.
Consent agenda, okay. We're not locked into anything.
Okay. Okay.
You're not, okay. You still are not committed to anything. We're going to, we have a motion.
We have a motion on the floor.
Okay, are we going to?
We have to do a roll call vote.
So we have to close down this room?
Not yet. First, we have to do the roll call vote, then we do.
I threw you off because of my question, I'm sorry.
Trustee Brandt.
Yes.
Trustee Campbell.
Yes.
Trustee Cook.
Yes.
Trustee Fritz.
Yes.
Trustee Honey.
Yes.
Trustee Thomas.
Yes.
And Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Okay. We're going to go into executive session. If anybody wants to stay, there is no action expected after executive session, but we will come back to the Zoom meeting, the same password, but we do not know what time that will be. Anything else? Okay, I'm going to shut down Zoom.